That was the problem.
Just recently, I started to provide documentation to Dr. Johnson since the Shota isn't at this point in time. The documentation that we would typically put to the Shota has been sent directly to Dr. Johnson. So yes, prior to this, even within the IPP, it always stated that those hearing notices had to be sent to the Shota, which we did.
Okay, so the other questions that I have, sorry, is with the hearings and the meetings. If you look on the third bulletin there?
Yes.
It says that in order to strengthen the relationship with foster communications between the assistant school and assistant on the Yachta travel officials, do we have the parents on that also that are on the advisory board?
Yes, slide this one.
And then just to get another understanding, the ESSA federal program, is that every student succeeds act?
Those are, okay.
As a parent, I guess I wouldn't be sure what that meant, so if we could maybe explain that a little bit better, especially if you have friends that are on the advisory board. Then the other question I had was the consultation meeting will serve in place of the June meeting unless another June meeting is requested. Is that with the ESSA program or is that something different?
So, Dr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong. Prior to tribal consultation, which has only been in place for, I believe, three or four years now, is when tribal consultation became a federal requirement for our funding programs. Prior to that point in time, the assistant school district and tribal officials determined that we were going to meet outside of these normal hearings, typically that January and June. So that's where those January-June timeframes come into play. So that's some language that kind of predated this ESSA program hearing. So, the language reading that we can have an additional meeting in June if requested by that board, typically the information that we would go through, we need to go through, is going to happen at that consultation meeting, which this year did happen in June. So, it's not to have the same meeting, it's going through the same things, but we're probably doing a consultation.
So then on the last sentence on there, can we add the parent advisory board also? It says, request a by either the assistant school district or assistant on the travel officials, can we also put the parent advisory board? Since we will be working together. So if you look on the last bulletin where it says the meetings, just in rooms and meetings with the consultation and participation by parents. It says the school district will take the following measures to improve our enhanced participation, consult with parents of Native American children in tribes. And this also includes a behavioral behavioral health programs or programs that are working with children that have behavioral issues or that are struggling on their IDPs that are related to behavioral issues or substance use or vaping.
Potential so.
So on policy three, it's statement number two that allows tribes and parents of Native American children the opportunity to review and comment on whether children can participate on an equal basis with non-Native American children. Under that one, I just had a question when it comes to the surveys that the children aren't asked to do here. Does that go through the travel LRRV board regarding surveys and data?
So, any surveys that students are asked to take on campus do have to meet certain requirements and the parents do have to have notification of those surveys. We have not gone through the IRV board, but the parents do either have to give consent or it's informed depending on the contents of the survey.
And then if you look in procedure three, under the first bulletin, there'll be the third one there, annual calculating this week and other curriculum programs and other related data. Is that what you guys do with their children inherently or testing out the progress? Is that what that means?
Yes, that's a piece of it. So, in your review information that's at the back table, that is some of our extracurricular and folkloric projects. The academic piece is typically presented, Dr. Johnson, is that typically in October, November, that that information is disseminated in the state of education report?
December.
December, right. So that's, that information is placed into that state of education report. And then we also present that in the March hearing. So, there are two places to find that information. The first would be in that state of education report Dr. Johnson's office publishes, and the second is in the March federal programs hearing.
So, in procedure four, on the second bulletin, is, as a parent here, I really don't feel like the communication through the schools and myself has really been easy because we have to only go to one place and that's to the district website. But I don't know if other parents feel the same way, but I'm not really sure if the notification by public advisory board and the official school newspaper to release prior to hearing and through the district websites, I'm not really sure if that's really meeting enough for the Native American children's parents because I feel like I'm not going to always look on the website. You know, some suggestions I had was, you know, emails like you've had with Dr. Johnson, maybe school letters sent out to the parents, the Oyakke news, the Shota or Facebook. Just getting this out there regarding these meetings, regarding, you know, like with this parent advisory board that's going to be coming, it'd really be nice to really get that out there. To me, that would show that the school board is willing to work with the parent advisory board to just kind of make sure that the education and everything is being, you know, worked out together. And then the other question I had, my last question, on procedure six. I see that you guys doing available for all stakeholders on assistant school district. Do you guys participate or involve with the tribal stakeholders that we have going?
Is to what extent?
Just with what you're saying here on procedure six.
So typically, the IPP has been mailed to all of the tribal officials and it's also been, or including Dr. Johnson, then also emailed to Dr. Johnson and just recently has been placed on the district website as well.
And is that kind of what you guys are going to remain that at?
Where the IPP, like themselves, yes. Do you have a suggestion?
Well, I know we do, we do have a lot of programs in the community, tribal programs that do get together. We do work with a lot of programs, getting some data there regarding substance use, commonly kids that have gone into the CDP area, you know, for substance use. So I feel like maybe a little bit of more transparency of being involved, that would really be grateful also because then you would have programs all over that kind of have an idea of what's going on with the school and the new children.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Can you go further, Dr. Johnson?
I do not. I, I worked with Dr. Meyer on this and I'm pretty comfortable with what it was. I like, I like the changes. We went through one by one and it's so much clearer now to me. If you guys, if you guys read it, you can understand it. I do know that one of the comments that I gave, Tammy, was the comment from our secretary and she really would like to have the copy of things mailed to the tribal officials. And so, I definitely would support that and maybe you've got the other suggestions of programs and stuff like that. So, all in all, I'd like to see a little bit more curriculum, a little bit more acknowledgement that natives really are a part of our school and that we have that, that awareness of all of that that comes with it. The history, the culture piece, the language, and so forth. It doesn't have, when it's being taught, that they're really cognizant that it's okay. It's okay to have that foundation, that acknowledgement. Otherwise than that, I'm pretty happy with our IPP document. I think it's well-written now and I think Dr. Meyer will all have worked on it. It's pretty good. I appreciate it.
And I will make sure that I meet or get together with you in some longer fashion before this is pulled through the board again. So on your agenda, there is a line item in the agenda to approve the IPP. We will be postponing that until next month. So Dr. Johnson and I have a time to review some of these changes that were requested with the IPP document.
Thank you both for putting in your input and showing up. I appreciate it. I'm calling meeting order. Public input. We've got two. We start off, I guess we're going to allow you each to speak and we've got a five-minute timeframe. I guess I won't have the time or I'll watch the clock, I guess. And then, I just, I'm going to start by reading. Questions of fact asked by the public shall, when appropriate, be answered by the president or referred to the superintendent for reply. No action, discussion, or discussion will transpire among the board members regarding such questions or comments. Questions requiring investigation shall be referred to the superintendent for later report to the board. Questions or comments on matters that are currently under legal review will not receive a response. And then, obviously, policies are provided by the board for disposition of legitimate complaints, including those involved individuals. And then we strongly prohibit mentioning staff or other personnel during a public meeting. Who wants to go first?
Oh, I'm just here on follow-up from two months ago. Just wondering, I listened to the last month's meeting, I'm the board president of the high school principal, we're against change. I'm just wondering if any more has been done. People, I can agree to disagree. I'm just wondering, does the board have a say in this or is it just what the principal wants? I mean, if their parent comes and wants change and asks the board to go ahead and change, why don't the board not concede? Why do we ask one person to concede the same? I'm not saying he's wrong, we can disagree. If you all vote and agree with him, I'm perfectly fine with it. But when one or two people make the decision, why don't let the board decide? I guess, this is the first question. Second of all, nobody's told, contacted or sent a letter saying she is or isn't. First day of volleyball, so today, no idea. Did you have volleyball? Nobody's told me. So, you can, but no, I don't know that for sure. Secondly, she made up the class this summer and according to your handbook, I don't see it anywhere that says recovery credit's going to come, is really come or don't come, or answer that. According to the, according to the state, she's eligible. So if somebody tells me she is or isn't, that's my main question. And the second question is, if she isn't, does the board, is the board on it? And if not, why, why do we have a board if they're not giving the option to vote? This is your question, yes.
Mr. Frederick, do you have that information that you presented last month stating the high school activities association credit recovery and when that was put in place as a choice that the districts made? Do you have that information you presented from last time?
I don't have that with me, but schools were given the choice back in, at least four or five years ago, at least. They were given a choice and at that time, the school superintendent, myself, the board all agreed credit recovery was not going to be used at that time.
Is that, is that a policy somewhere in the government or policies there for this?
So, school districts that have that as a policy, the credit recovery is available for students to use for the eligibility? That's listed directly in their policy, the credit recovery is allowed for those eligibility?
That is written somewhere in our policy?
That's not written in our policy, but in schools that use credit recovery for that eligibility, it's specifically listed in there that credit recovery is allowed. And then it also notates how many credits can be allowed in credit recovery for eligibility.
I would say that's maybe that, so as far as the state is concerned, she is eligible unless I notify that she isn't. Doing the policy, we don't have a policy that says she isn't. You have a policy saying that made up credits, we don't have. You don't have, I'm asking about her underbanking, so what do you tell them? It's all capital. So she made up the credit, so she's eligible. Right or, I'm just looking around, I'm not here arguing, like you say, if the name Jim can disagree on this and tell her to blow the paper, probably need to go into the gift, but... If somebody showed me a policy that says she's not eligible, do you know, does anyone prove it up?
So, districts were given the choice to determine if they were going to use credit recovery for eligibility. At the point in time that the activities association made that determination that schools could do it, the assistant school district chose not to allow credit recovery for eligibility.
Okay, so according to, if you ask the state, no. The state says, yes, she is.
The state allows each district to make a choice.
Unless the school provides a policy that says she is not eligible. The way I understand it, I mean, I'm understanding it wrong, but that's the way I understand it.
Each school is given a choice to allow that or not allow that?
Correct. I would like to see our choice.
Our choice when it was implemented was no.
Where is that? Or is it just, you know, actually we can say accepted, but it's not very common or it changes every other year and it'll be a little different.
So, if it would be allowed, then we would have to write that specifically into the policy.
Okay, that answers that question.
Or does it say that?
And in our registration book, there is, there is a bit of information in there about credit recovery. Doesn't say specifically it's not used, but the reason it was brought forward to the board's attention back then is because schools had a choice at that time to either adopt it or not. Without any adoption, adoption of it, it's not used. Did I say that correctly? Not adopted, that it's not used.
Can I, can I have a comment on this discussion? It's not my discussion, but I think that, you know, why would you even have credit recovery if you're not validating those credits? And why would you not validate a child, a student, the opportunity to play, to play sports? Whoever she is, she earned that right now. Why would you hold that against someone? Why won't you vote on it?
Now, that would be my next question, why, why don't the board give the say instead of? I know the last meeting, the board president and I'd say were strongly against it, that's, that's fine. But then when the district decided that was any discussion, why not bring it up to the board when you have the full board here and bring it up to the board?
If I may, since I'm the board president and allow to speak, I, if you play that meeting back, I asked this board three times if there was any input, any changes, any requests. This, this board denied three times to ask for changes, requests by the principal to change that. So it wasn't a board president or a principal decision. This board had the opportunity, they decided to go with the current policy or that was the time to speak their piece. August ninth would have then been the meeting for the board to then decide whether or not we adopt the handbook by the set principal, which we now have a copy of, which doesn't change that policy. We received this Friday. Again, if there was any recommendations or any change, I believe that would have been the time for the board to ask Mr. Frederick and Tammy to change that. So it isn't a one-sided, the board has no say, why did you not vote? It is not coming up because they are agreeing at hand what the policy has been set and moving forward with it. So that, I'm hoping that answers that question.
Yeah, as long as, as long as majority is in agreement with it, that's fine.
Question. So I have a son that's in high school, he's in 11th grade and he is on an IDP. He does He does struggle academically. And one of the concerns that he had was that he was struggling trying to do football and then doing his academics, and he was struggling in his academics. And now this year, he would like to join football, but he still has some credits himself that he needs to make up. Is there gonna be accommodation to those people that are on IEP that do struggle academically? Does that affect them also?
That would probably be a question best answered by the case manager that knows a little bit more about that particular child and progenies.
There any answers too? Because that would have been, I'm hoping we answered the question that I get.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if there was something, or if there was a question.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we answered, answered them. If not, then I would suggest we maybe meet with. There's still question? Otherwise, Glory?
I just have a few concerns from listening to the last school board meeting. First, there have been on the eligibility. Mr. Frederick had stated the different schools have their ways and how many had their semesters like ours, did the semesters. The other thing I didn't find, listen to when Mr. Frederick was talking, was they did it by semesters, but how many classes did each of these schools have to pass? I know for sure Warner does it by semester, and they have to pass five classes, just academic, not four, just five classes out of their six or seven, whatever they take for this thing. I agree with the semester. I guess I don't agree with passing all the classes. Sometimes kids are kids, and they bust their tails, and I've got one of them that has, that will do more than what most kids have because he struggles too. And even though he struggles, he still gets his work done, but I feel like, you know, if there's that oohs chance that he fails one class, why can't we have it where if you fail one class, you can still play sports? Because he would totally be devastated if he didn't get to play football, basketball. He doesn't run track, what if he decided to run track? Just because with his learning disability, it puts him at more greater risk of failing a class than most kids. Every kid is different, and we need to, as a school district, think about our kids and not just think that they're gonna make it through high school without failing a class. Like I said, I think they should have a little leeway, maybe one class failed and leave it at that, but I don't know. My next thing was, is Mr. Frederick, I told you guys as a school board last, the beginning of last semester, or last school year, I should say, within the first two weeks, there was 144 kids that were failing. 144 kids. And you guys at the school board didn't even ask him what the heck was going on. 144 kids. Thirty of them were athletes. But you guys didn't act. How many of these kids were homeschool kids that were failing? How many of these kids were in school? There was no difference. Nobody asked that question. How many of those 144 kids are out of school kids that are, were homeschooled because of COVID? How many of these kids were in school? And then your next, my next question, if I were out of school board, then what's the biggest class they're failing in? Is it science? Is it English? Is it math? And then why? Why are they failing these classes? To me, I would have been asked that. Our teachers, what are our teachers doing to help our kids that are failing? Many would say it's the parent's responsibility to help their kids, but many parents have no clue on English or math. I don't do math. If my child is struggling, my husband has to. And then I do reverse because I'm, and I like English. But some of these teachers, and I'm a parent that is on these teachers constantly, and you can ask a majority of them, I email them constantly. Because there's times, especially as Dean's freshman year, I had no idea what this English teacher was even asking. And I'm an adult. So if I have no idea what this English teacher is asking for an assignment, how do our kids know? And I'm not kidding, some of these assignments, why? The instructions are terrible, but nothing's being done. I can harp and harp, and I have harped. Many teachers probably get three, four emails per week a day. What do you want my child to do because your instructions are unclear? And if I don't get it as an adult, then how the heck are our kids gonna get it? I've also had, where you guys said it's responsibility of parents to check a parent portal. I'm a parent that checks the parent portal on a daily basis, sometimes two or three times a day. Mr. Frederick said in his last thing was all teachers have them, and you should be able to check them off at the end of the day. Wrong. They are not updated on a daily basis. I've had Dean missing anywhere between three and four assignments, and then he comes home because I can see it, and I will harp on him, and he's like, Mom, my assignments are done. They're turned in and handed in. But as days go by, because where their due dates are, they get a zero place because the computer automatically retaliates, and there's a zero. So I'm on email, emailing teachers, asking, is my son failing? Where are my three classes, our little grades? He's missing. Although I have them, just don't have them in yet. The computer automatically puts in they're missing. That's not fair to our kids. That's not fair to us as a parent, because I'm a parent, and I see that, I'm harping at my kid for not having his homework in. So how do we hold our kids responsible? When we don't hold our own teachers responsible for getting the grades in like Mr. Frederick had said they were supposed to? What would our teachers do? Most teachers have 50 students a day. How would they like to go to Sioux Falls? My nephew has a thousand kids in his class. And that's a junior class in Sioux Falls, a thousand kids. They have four graduations in one Saturday to get them all through. And all our teachers gotta do is put 50 grades in in a normal day. I understand some assignments aren't due that day, fine. But how do we do that? Then you get teachers that don't put grand grades at all. And you can harp and harp and harp. And then you get to the end of the school year, and your child failed. Been there. You know what I got told back in the day? Oh, wow, see your child next year. She's still teaching it, she's still doing it. So when you have a teacher that doesn't put their grades on, and then wait till the end of the school year or the end of the semester, and you find out your child failed, but yet you're sitting there harping at your kid, why isn't your class was in? Why are your children, it's in, it's in, it's in? Then you're emailing this teacher, I go to conferences, I even went to that conference back in the day. And all I did is, yep, he's passing, don't worry about it. And then he fails. At that time, Sistin didn't have, so if you failed, it was no big deal if that failed one class. You still got to play football, basketball, whatever, the next year.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna cut you off because we have a big meeting tonight, but I will tell you. Majority of your issues and concerns that you're addressing can be handled right in the principal's office.
But I have to, Mr. Frederick.
Okay, then your next step is my superintendent. And then your next step is here with the documentation and the proof that it didn't come through the other direct channels. Because we are not the people that make those decisions. But I, valid concerns, if they, if, if those are the things you need to take to the next level, then my suggestion is, is you start with, with the formal letters, and then it would come to us to make a move. But after public input, that our next move is not to make a move without formal written confirmation, if that makes any sense. I'm just trying to guide you with the direct steps. Like I said, all great concerns, if that's what's going on. Obviously, we'd like to understand what's going on. But unfortunately, we have to, we have to move on with the meeting. I appreciate it, and thank you very much for coming and speaking your piece. Okay. Does any board members have a conflict of interest with tonight? Any motion to move for the consent agenda?
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider any additions to the agenda.
I have one minor change to the agenda. Action item number seven, motion to approve out of contract for 2021, 2022. That should be motion to approve out of contract for 2020, 2024. So auditors can do that work this fall for last year's, this year.
And we need to change number one as well, right?
Um, that already has, but we can just table it.
I make a motion to third the agenda with the change.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Informative items, 2021, 2022 school planning.
So in your papers, there is a Sistin School District 54 to say to return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. A majority of this plan and the information found on the first approximately three pages are required points of information from the U.S. Department of Education. We are required to outline 13 different components and how they align with CDC recommendations. And that's point eight who held on pages one through three of that safer turn to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. When you get into the bottom of page four, it talks about the district will ensure continuity of educational services for students who are following. And it describes services to address students' academic needs, including learning loss, social, emotional, and mental health needs, staff members' social, emotional, and mental health needs, food services, and students' health if not addressed above. Again, the, the main framework of this plan comes out of, all of the school districts in the country are required to make these types of plans in order to be eligible for S R three plans. This is required to show that your school district is making a conscious effort, or a conscious effort to open in-person for the 21, 22 school year. South Dakota, not an issue because most schools were open for the course of the school year. But that's where some of these things just kind of come into play. On page four, health and safety protocols, a couple of changes that are in this draft from last year. Last year, we had required all students and, we had required all staff members to complete a daily symptom screening on-site before they began the workday. We are not going to do that in-house anymore. We are simply going to ask staff to take care of that before they come to work. And if they don't feel well, they are to remain home for the course of the day. Parents and guardians are still asked to complete a daily symptom screening each day and to remain home if COVID-19 symptoms are present. It does state that students and staff members who become ill during the school day will be asked to wear a face mask until they're able to go home. One allowance that we do have is we will have the binax now, quick tests. If somebody is becoming symptomatic for COVID, they can go ahead and request one of those quick tests that our school nurse can administer. It is a 15-minute test. If a family does not want to do that, because the parent does have to sign the form stating that they consent for that test, the family can take COVID-19 tests home. We have asked to have sourcing of Fidel Quick View OTC tests. So they're simply an over-the-counter test, like one you can buy at Walmart. We can send those home to staff, we can send them home to students, we can send them home to families. And families can use those either for asymptomatic COVID screening or for symptomatic COVID screening. The last page talks about our quarantine policy. And the biggest change we've made in quarantine policy last year and this year is that this year, close contacts do not have to remain home for a specific number of days. If you recall, we did have that close contacts at the very beginning of the school year had to remain home for those 10 days. I believe it was actually 14 days is how we started the school district. And then it turned into 10 days, and then with further guidance, it turned into our close contacts can stay in school after five days of negative test. As the school year moved on, we were getting slower and slower notifications from the Department of Health, oftentimes to the point where we didn't know that somebody had a positive test or somebody was in close contact until day five, six, or seven. So oftentimes, we were identifying close contacts after that period of five to seven days had happened. So we are asking that if somebody is a potential close contact, which would be that school-based close contact, that they only remain in school if they're 100% symptom-free, wearing a face covering throughout the course of the day, obviously with the exception of eating lunch. Do daily health screenings with a temperature check via office staff. And those are all things that we had in place last year with our, our students and staff members as well. And then when available, we will offer those COVID take-home tests for families to use for additional screening as well. And I think just the fact that we can have that to offer to our families is a point of comfort as well. It's knowing that they can have access to a COVID test somewhere. I did present you with notes tonight that were the feedback that I received on these plans, particularly related to this plan. That was in your staff information on the table tonight. I also emailed that to you this morning. I believe we had 44 responses to the plan. I think there's a little bit of confusion when I was reading some of the staff information that right now, we do recommend that staff members are in that 15-minute, six-foot proximity with students or other staff, that they do wear a face mask because that is still the close contact definition. It is not very often that a lot of our students or their staff are going to be that close to a student throughout the course of the day. But if you're a staff member and you're working one-on-one with the students, would be highly recommended that you wear masks for protection of yourself and for that student. And the other point of information, COVID-19 vaccinations, I received some feedback that nobody that's been vaccinated should ever be asked to wear a face mask. We don't have access to that information. It doesn't have to refer to the State Department of Health if somebody is vaccinated or not. So the response we got from the Department of Health was we should just take a person's word at whether they're vaccinated or not and decide if we should trust that person's response to a vaccination status. So we don't have any language in our policy that aligns to if you're vaccinated, do this, if you're not vaccinated, do that as a requirement. Because we oftentimes won't have access to that vaccination data. As I mentioned, in prior months, if COVID-19 activity begins to increase within school or community, it's likely they'll again ask the board to reinstate that mask use in the hallways, when lining up in the lunchroom. We're not able to maintain that social distancing from each other, which is the same process we put in place last December-ish, I believe. But they would take board action to do that before we move forward. Any questions on this particular plan?
I think even if you're vaccinated, you can still, period COVID, give it to somebody else. So that's kind of not really, the purpose of wearing the mask is to protect the people around you. It's not really that.
But anyway, like I said, I think there was some confusion with reading some of the feedback that was presented. I think some individuals maybe read pieces, but not the full document. And some of that will just have to address, who are staff who come back to school last week with some expectations of of what we are requiring compared to what we're having. The next piece is the American Rescue Plan, Emergency in Secondary School, Emergency Relief Requirement for A R P S R School District Plan. Everything found within this plan is part of the document template that we have to submit to the Department of Education. We are to explain very specifically how the budget areas are going to be allocated in the areas of prevention and mitigation strategies, academic impact of lost instructional time, investments aligned with students' needs, investments in other allowed activities, engaging students at risk, and stakeholder consultation. And this plan as well as the other do have to be updated every six months. So if there's any changes in the budget priorities, those will be updated again every six months. Aligned with the prevention and mitigation strategies, funding spent in those areas did need to be aligned with CDC guidance, and you can see the narrative with that. Academic impact of lost instructional time, that is where I had asked the board for authorization for additional full-time staff. So we would be able to place additional staff in each building for the next three school years. As you know, we have been able to fill those, we've been able to fill one of the positions at this point in time. But there could be some semester-based fill for those positions. those positions as well to be able to have some additional intervention time for our, for our students. Um, this is also the funding source that we're going to use for our student touring, credit recovery, uh, summer school programs that we'll continue to offer, and also, uh, individualized learning software. We've done a little bit of a deeper dive into what we're using for educational software platforms this, uh, summer. We're piloting, or we did pilot a couple of programs over the summer, uh, and piloting another one for our earliest learners into this upcoming school year to decide if that's something that we want to continue with once we are out of this funding source. And, I believe that's the bulk of this plan. Any questions on any of those points of information?
Okay. Policy first readings for administration of medications to students?
All right. So, um, a couple of new policies that all align with the impact of medical cannabis in the state of South Dakota. Policy J H C D, Administration of Medication to Students. Um, it allows us the continued availability with our certified or with our registered nurse, with our eCare platform, and also with our licensed medication aides to administer medications to students once we have the documentation to do so from the fancies. Um, it does specifically put in that, or in that language though, that this does not include the administration of medical cannabis. That leads into policy J H C B E, Administration of Medical Cannabis to Qualifying Students. Um, specifically in that policy, it states the school will not administer or store medical cannabis. Uh, students over the age of 18 must have a caregiver bring and administer medical cannabis, and all medical cannabis must be in non-smokable form. Um, the location where that is stored and administered, excuse words, administered is solely at the school's discretion. Um, and all students that were qualified under this policy must have a valid South Dakota Department of Health card. That health, health card will also identify the certified caregivers. Um, if a student has a medical cannabis card from another state or location, that card must first be registered by the South Dakota Department of Health, and then they also must meet South Dakota's qualification for a debilitating condition. So, all of those things need to happen in order for somebody to move one of the, a medical marijuana card from another location into the South Dakota Department of Health. We have been told the Department of Health will not have those rules and regulations in place until November. So, it's likely that November would be the first that we would find a student, uh, in this capacity. And then policy G B E C, Use of Alcohol, Drugs, and Controlled Substances is more aligned with staff. Um, the biggest target language is that this is that school staff are not allowed to manufacture, possess, sell, distribute, or be under the influence of alcohol and/or other drugs on school property or at other school events off of school property. Another component states that an employee must report any criminal alcohol or drug convictions within five days, and a prescription drug used outside of the prescribed use is not allowed. So, if somebody had a prescription medication but was using outside of the prescription, that would fall under the Use of Alcohol, Drugs, and Controlled Substances policies.
Chairman, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Does your, and it's kind of related to this, but do, does your tobacco policies and everything that you encompass, do they encompass baking? Is baking in your policies?
Baking is included in our tobacco policy unless the baked substance in the vape is not tobacco. Then it would fall under Drug Substance.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I just, I, I can't get the policies up in my, on my phone, but, thank you.
Any questions on?
Policy second readings?
So, these policies were all brought forward, uh, last month, and they were all existing policies, but there have been some updated legal changes, um, and some clarification needed in our existing policies. So, policy A H, Conflict of Interest Disclosure and Authorization, uh, removes reference to a local service agency. Policy B D, School Board Meetings, uh, we no longer have to do a roll call vote during a teleconference meeting. Um, it can be a voice vote with a call for a roll call if needed. J B C A, Admission of Resident Students, um, now gives updated provisions for the admission of military children to a distance learning program, and that's due to a legislative update in this last session. Policy J F B, Education of Homeless Children, uh, it changed the definition of a homeless child according to current state and federal laws, and then also updates the language if there is a dispute about a homeless child's status. And then J O A, Student Directory Information with Exhibits, uh, it changes the reference from a local technical institute to technical college as that was updated, and there was some redundant language, um, regarding providing information to military recruiters.
Moving on to action items, motion to approve the Impact A, Policies of Procedures, we're going to postpone until the September board meeting.
That is correct.
Okay. So, we'll make a motion to set the new levy.
And then with this levy, um, we are following the state values. We see that our general fund levy actually has a decrease of 0.267 from last year. Our special ed fund levy is 1.67 per thousand valuation, which is also a decrease of 0.014 from last year. And our capital outlay will be 1.877, $508, which is no change from 2021, and it's actually not been changed. I believe this is the third year that we have not changed that capital outlay allocation.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax levy as follows.
One second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the 2021, 22 meal prices?
Okay. So, this year, due to another SDA waiver, um, free meals will continue for all students. So, there's no board action necessary on that piece. The adult meals, we have to re, we have to evaluate, um, that entire course of action for all non-programmed foods, which includes adult meals, second meals, vending machines. And due to the, um, factors in that evaluation, I am recommending an increase of 10 cents to raise the adult meal price from 425 to 435. So, the adult meal price is the only one that will require board approval.
Can I number reapprove?
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the non-certified handbook?
So, the non-certified staff handbook and the certified staff handbook, both have a number of updates, uh, most of which came out of either clarification needs internally or out of, uh, negotiations and, um, the changes that happened with our, our salaries that have been provided to our staff in the upcoming school year. So, there is a sheet that just kind of outlines the major components of the handbook, or the handbook updates. Um, in the non-certified handbook, point four or five talks that personal orders using the school district's name, established business account, school-provided email account, or personal address are prohibited. School meals will be updated to 435. Um, one piece we put into place last year was that volunteer coaching or that volunteer form within the school districts. So, now that is included in the coaching requirements and evaluation. Volunteer coach must complete all of that volunteer application and mandatory coaching requirements before providing a service. Health insurance, um, a statement that the health insurance benefit will be terminated at the end of the month, in which the community has proposed with the Assistant School District that had not been directly defined prior to this point in time. And then we updated the board share of health insurance, um, aligned with negotiations. Uh, sick leave, uh, a new component states that non-certified employees are allowed to use sick leave during time periods designated within their employment agreement. The amount of leave used in one day cannot be greater than the hours designated in the employment agreement, meaning if we have a paraprofessional whose job starts on August 13th, which is the first day of in-service, they would not be eligible to take sick leave on August 5th. Also, if somebody has, uh, an employment agreement for seven and a half hours a day, they can only take seven and a half hours of sick leave in a day. So, both of those things, uh, have to be in place. Uh, through negotiations, uh, our non-certified staff members are allowed up to four sick days in the upcoming school year when students participate in virtual school days. And then also, an inclusion that the sick leave may not be used at the time of resignation or termination of employment for our non-certified staff unless accompanied by a medical note stating the employees need to use their approved leave. Sick bank, um, just some clarification language. Uh, oftentimes, we have employees that begin the school year and our sick bank hasn't started because we don't start sick bank until mid-September as we start to collect that information. So, included language, employees will begin after Sept-September 15th may sign up for sick bank at the beginning of the second semester and must sign up by January 24th. Prior to this, individuals that started after September 15th could not sign up for sick bank. So, our non-certified staff now have that availability. Uh, we also just put in language stating where the sick bank year is going to take place, and that will go with our fiscal year. And then also that employees must have a sick leave balance in order to donate sick leave days. Since there's a gap between the beginning and the school term, and when sick bank signup is available, staff members may donate up to the number of days they would accrue within the first two months of employment. So, a staff member just starting is not going to have any sick leave to donate. So, then they wouldn't be able to buy into sick bank, and we can't let them go into the negative to buy into sick bank. But this would allow them to do so in limited fashion. Um, also that came out of negotiations, and with this milestone bonus, the non-certified staff members have their 10, 15, 20, and every five years thereafter, here is a non-certified servant in the district will receive a $1,000 bonus at the end of the completion of the year of service. And that that will not be retroactive as we move forward. This is the first rule being added to place.
Make a motion to approve non-certified handbook? One second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the certified staff handbook?
Uh, teacher handbook, a couple of the same exact things, uh, alignment purchasing, school meals, uh, additional language has been written in here, school hours and workday. When school starts late due to inclement weather or other reasons, the teacher workday will begin 20 minutes prior to the student day, and the teachers are to remain in their supervision roles until buses have left the building. Uh, transfer policy, 5.14, that new language was all, was all established and agreed upon during the negotiations process. Um, 6.4, Praxis Reimbursement, just clarification that the district doesn't reimburse the PLT praxis or a pedagogy exam required for certification through reverse content area praxis, but not that pedagogy exam. Uh, inter-staff substitution, those rates were updated for this upcoming school year through negotiations, same with summer school rates, the same with extra pay for extra time rates. Um, withholding of teachers' association dues, that was ruled in our negotiated agreement. Health insurance is updated based on negotiations. Um, sick leave, civically, professionally, and politically, uh, this, the decisions are not subject to grievance was all added into negotiation language. And personal leave, negotiations stated that personal leave will be purchased back at the daily certified substitute teacher rate. It had been a flat monetary value, and now it's at the daily certified.
I'll make a motion to approve the certified staff handbook?
Check. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve Westside Elementary, Assistant Middle School, Assistant High School student handbooks?
Mr. Brother, any changes you'd like to refine on your handbook tonight?
Um, not necessarily changes. I did add some information in there about, um, the different types of graduation policies that could affect the performance for it. With the, it's also, there's a link there because it's quite an elaborate, um, chart I noticed. Did, did add in the vague part of it, right in the back.
Just a couple of things being new, I didn't want to come in and change a whole lot, but a couple of things, um, I did put in an eligibility policy for the middle school. If you had a chance to look at that, um, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask. Uh, the other thing was, um, after a third tardy in a week, a student is going to have ISS, I didn't feel that appropriate. I think that's overkill. Um, I changed that to retention because I really want to be in the classroom as much as possible because they're tardy, and now we're going to pull them out more. So, I wanted to change that too. Um, and then we separated to, um, separated on our matrix, discipline matrix, separated out tobacco. Um, so that's a little bit of a lesser consequence as it was lumped in with alcohol and substance, higher substance abuse. Um, and so, and it does also include baking, uh, in the tobacco. So, that was just a little bit, basically that was it.
Um, there's, if you read the update, I did a visitor update, just we're going to bring in families, assign a date, and try that again with lunch, so that's in there. Give each day of holiday after my had visited about that, so I'll be sharing that out with families. And then as far as having visitors in the classroom, uh, I visited with some teachers, and they're comfortable with having them scheduled. So, if families or parents want to come in, um, they'll schedule that with the teacher rather than just having that wide open. The first day of school and open house, we will have that, go visit the classroom, take your pictures, et cetera. But after that, sorry, now it's 25th, we'll go back to, um, just come to the entryway and are coming on the day. That lunch is assigned to you. We'll try that this year. I did some updates on my office, our office cell matrix as well. We've had some feedback that it would be appropriate to have a J K kindergarten, uh, line as well. So, based on data received this last year, I slipped that out. So, if you're seeing that, I put that together, so I leveled down J K K, one and two and three and four. So, that is an adjustment. And then just some wording for clarity for some of those areas rather than just writing disruption of wording or writing horseplay. Took some time to define that. So, we're all in, um, clear agreement with what that is. And, um, grades, we often have some confusion or wonderings of what our grading is, and we are on an academic performance level at Westside. So, I just, I took right from our report card and placed that into the handbook this year. And, um, and then we are also making sure that we do at least, um, give some form of participation and/or acknowledgement to science and social studies, um, in our lesson plans and in our daily instruction, and also on the report card for grades taken for. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the student handbook.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the offer contract?
So, this is the, um, we have to prove it here, um, and it's for auditing the school year of 2020, 21. And the estimated cost of the audit was dependent on the actual programs that could be added, other than, I think a lot of standards, they were from 28,075 to 32,375.
Make a motion to approve the offer contract for...
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve enrollment application?
We do not have the enrollment.
Motion to approve the 10 and 3 enrollment application?
We just have one intent to re-enroll applications for students that have opened the door, helped, been involved on school district, gave his plan, and, and that goes up. And, and again, this is just in the, for, for almost two weeks now.
One second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve personnel with full staff leave and resignations?
Um, okay. New staff, certified staff, may amold you with special education, do you record elementary education, non-certified and higher skilled, as a high school professional, pre-sig, and a low school professional. Here, the coaching, well, this is employees at all. So, then we have other resignations tonight. Uh, first, I'm right as to inform you, my reservation is that my three boys basketball coach effectively is free of 2021. And I thank and appreciate the opportunity, it's coaching is something... And I thank and appreciate the opportunity as coaching something higher than I've gone through since I went to hours of assistant school. I enjoy my time as a role, but when a coach is out, I mean, it's the happiest to come around and just like throw away that thing. And also, um, please accept this letter as an application for reservation for my position as class manager. My final date of employment is in July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. This was not a decision that was made lightly. I appreciate the opportunity to give it to you in the higher league and my position in the last years. I've learned a lot and now I'm people I work with. However, at this time, I feel like I need to make a change for both myself and I am sincerely to Tyler, Tyler Schultz, um, and Tyler. We also have, um, Tanner Stapleton, middle school boys basketball, Tanner Stapleton, Miss Steph Johnson is a basketball coach. And then also December April, I resigned my position as assistant track coach. So those are the certified and non-certified years of resignations we have.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Motion to approve the software next to our association ballot?
The year of activities association ballot that we've gotten. Uh, this is hopefully the final one of the ballot of the year. Um, anybody who is appointed or elected to one of these boards has to have an early vote of membership. This is for the West River Ask Board representative and I recommend bringing us to serve this year.
One second.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Motion to approve safer term to impersonate and continuity of service attempt. I'll, okay.
Do you want to go through that?
Pretty sure I know the whole thing.
I'll make a motion to approve. Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Motion to approve Art Mensur, three, school district plan.
I'm aware of.
One second.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Motion to approve work policies, count of interest to school year and operation.
We do all together and hold on. Yes, we can just do the halls, sorry, um, the hall halls as well. Um, yes, we can do that as one policy to all those students. So you can just say to this, we will approve all of this. I'm wondering if you're involved by, I think, board call this.
Right. Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Motion to approve pickup point requests from other districts?
We have three pickup requests at this point in time. Uh, the ones from Wilbon School District, do a pickup at Agency Village, we have. Favorite three-point grant, Allen. Uh, the Burton School District is asking for a pickup point, who's working store in Melbourne. And just this evening, I received, um, a request from Rossins to do a pickup point, um, in, in Wellington, in Clear City, and we go.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Motion to approve substitution point.
So I am recommending that we improve all our substitute teacher payments, uh, ten dollars from last year. That would align as a hundred and forty-five dollars for a certified teacher per day, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for an individual with a bachelor degree, an invitation certificate. But then we would also have transcripts on file with that staff member who a substitute has the bachelor's degree. And then a hundred and fifteen dollars a day for not a certified teacher, uh, along with substitute. A four rate for a daily rate, which is correct.
I'll make a motion to approve substitute pay. Opposed? Motion to approve?
One second. Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Identify items for the September meeting. Communication items, administrative reports?
Um, well, just exciting, uh, our director maintains the pay-to-transmission program. And, um, three of us did training and set it all up. So it will be completed sometime, I suppose, it's really cool. And, um, we also trained six more staff to be, to be trainers of crisis prevention intervention. Um, and so we'll be able to train our staff, I don't know if it will be throughout this next year on the escalation, I think, so. That's really exciting. Ready to be a boss. And Tom is with us tonight, our middle school district, so welcome, this is the district, anybody who can, I really don't have anything to prepare. But I'm, I'm gonna question you, so.
If you maybe tell us something about your, we were in, uh, in your.
Um, okay, well, um, I'm originally South, but I'm South Canadian graduate and I've been to Northern, come in undergrad in Northern. Taught in South Dakota for seven years, for a year in Colorado, ended up in North Dakota for the last twenty-plus years. Um, teaching there, served as a secondary principal in two districts and ultimately served as superintendent the last two years in our last district. Um, but when we remarried and moved to New York, and so I then, I drove for four years to Northern to go to my job and that was brutal. So I'm thankful to be closer to my, uh, my undergrad is a secondary in language administration. I certified to teach almost anything, middle school through high school, um, middle school specifically. Uh, so I coached a lot, I'm very involved, a strong supporter of athletics, strong supporter of athletics and activities. Understand that's a huge part of our education, a big supporter of athletics. Um, number one, so I have six, my husband has six kids in the month, I'm going to be a grandmother in September, so I will be gone for, um, my first anniversary of something, so. Got a lot going on, but I'm really excited to be close to coming to be here. There's a lot, I'm, I'm impressed with what I've seen so far. I'll be ready for the challenge, but, but it is education right now, honestly, right? No matter where you go. There are challenges.
Oh, welcome.
Yes, welcome. And I've never spoken words. I will bring her in next fall.
Uh, we started registration today, so it's kind of nice to see the kids coming and going and they're also doing the kshk. So we're getting started, it's all in the short. Well, I have any questions?
I don't have a whole lot more than our handbook, thank you for proving that and just looking forward to working together as a team and this part is a little. Temperature check from Westside, there's a lot of staff that have been in there since August second, been asking so many questions and I said, I'm just trying to leave you alone now. Making services until eighteen, so they're here and they're excited and they're bubbling with ideas and sharing and planning things to build a culture for our students. That's really encouraging to see that, so thank you for the opportunity.
Um, I think we're doing pretty good, uh, everything is getting pretty close to being ready. Uh, we always at this time of year, we have all the little, short little, uh, less things to do and a few things, less things to do, but it's coming together.
Um, a couple of things to bring for us to tonight, um, the loss program, for summer daycare program. We did receive the grant from the promising services that he is a three hundred dollar third child grant to work. Uh, it is tuition reimbursement for each student who is enrolled in the loss on July twelfth. So once we receive notification about the work, we did provide notifications to the families. They have to sign a form stating that they are accepted for and they're receiving a three hundred dollar credit on their child care. So once we have applied that three hundred dollar credit, then we will have them sign a form again stating that they receive that three hundred dollar bill credit. So all of our families and students, we'll, that makes a time or half to do that. Um, the co-op architecture proposal, uh, we didn't even co-op art, um, uh, last weekend, you know, during July. And now we're currently drafting a pool for services just like they did for the middle school project. And that draft of services sets the pace as to what we would do if they start to go through and start growing up projects. Um, when the construction drafts are completed or they're restructuring, we'll get some updated projects, we would need to include that in those of the services. And when I have that, I will share it up further. Um, and then just the last, we is back to school day, September eighteenth, we'll have our new staff on site on August seventeenth for a new teacher orientation. Uh, August eighteenth and nineteenth, we'll have professional development, all staff will need to work. And then the twenty-third is our last professional development day. The Westside open house is on Monday, the twenty-third, from four until five thirty. And the middle school open house, I mean, I typed on the page, it is the twenty-third from five until six thirty. Uh, August twenty-fourth is our first day of school for all of our Westside elementary students. And our fifth grade students at the middle school and our ninth grade students at the high school. And then August twenty-third, everybody else will go to school next year. Um, last, just in your packet, and I don't know whether you will do it for me or go through this with me, it's a dream. But this is the updated guidance from the TBC Association regarding COVID nineteen return to play. And also what protocol will be if a student athlete has a COVID nineteen infection and how they can try to play after that.
All right. I'll make a motion, one minute.
One second.
Discussion.
I have a question. Sorry, uh, new teacher pictures, when are we going to take them? The seventeenth or eighteenth?
Actually, the best would be if you would take them on the seventeenth, I can give you a, a, a.
Okay. And then we can do a article on the new.
Yeah, Paul, we know that.
Okay. What's that?
Well, she's pretty excited about that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
All right, discussion, on one exact. Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
So are you going to be working at school?
Oh, yeah.
All the time?
Pretty much.
My lady will call you?
Okay, your lady can call me.
Uh, Mimi Larson is her name.
Okay.
Okay, she's from Russell, so she's the writer.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay.
All righty.
And I'll come and take a picture, but I'll set it up beforehand.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I have a couple new specialists that are coming from Philippines that probably won't be here on the day.
Um.
If they could get in later and have.
We can actually do a, do a, um.
Please do. Can't see him.
You know, if we have a couple that are late, we can, we can just do a couple of write-ups in the paper.
Later?
Yeah.
All right, that'd be good.
Okay.
Have a good one, Kevin.
You too. I set this up to charge last night and it didn't charge, I don't know what the heck happened.
I think I cut a bugger.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift. For all your pond needs, countryside aid, assisted living, and memory care. In Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank, Assistedit. Use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Assistedit with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Assistedit for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Assistedit. And of course, the Assistedit Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.